All right, welcome to the combined special open meeting of April ten, twenty nineteen. I will call to order the South Borough School Committee as well as the Union.
Second South Borough.
The other chairs could call their committees to order.
I'll call North Borough School Committee order.
I'll call Union to the South Borough.
And the only item on our agenda is the superintendent's recommendation for position of Director of Finance and Operations.
Thank you, Mr. Desmond. We do have another also on the agenda, a slight calendar update as well.
Okay.
So before we depart, there's one slight modification to the voted school calendar. So just to recap the process for the Director of Finance and Operations, as we know, we did conduct an initial search and from that search, and thank you Roger, Challen, and Lynn Winter for being part of that pre-screening or the screening committee. We actually, myself and Greg, went through all of the applicants to sort of identify viable candidates to be interviewed by the screening committee, the school committee. Greg and Jim Dogg were part of that process and I participated when the finalists were sent to my office as well. Clearly, you have the outgoing and the incoming, so it's important that both perspectives were shared through the interview process and I feel that along with the support of the school committee in the interview process, the pre-screening process, we do have the best candidate for the position. We had fifteen applicants, which sounds exciting until you actually start looking at qualifications. Those of you who've been on screening committees before, and Sean is smiling, he's a building administrator, he definitely knows what that process is like. When you have an opportunity to review the candidate's packet and have some better understanding of their experiences, you find that if you have a handful of viable candidates, it's a fortunate experience. We had six, five candidates that were interviewed by the four-member committee, Lynn, Roger, Greg, and Jim. And two of those, three of those candidates were moved forward. From that process, we went down to two, conducted interviews, extensive interviews, actually not just once but twice. We had all the candidates, the three candidates back. And tonight, we do have, and I say we, it's been a joint effort, I have a recommendation to the committee that Rebecca Palagno, the appointed Director of Finance and Operations, I have her resume, which will be distributed, and I have more than two hands full of good reasoning behind this recommendation. So I'm passing this along. As we've discussed on many occasions, our district is complex. If we had any doubt, we last night had an audit subsidy meeting for the region and we heard from our auditor, unsolicited but openly and willingly, shared by Tom Scanlon, his experience working with a number of regional districts but also a number of districts in general, and how many opening there are for these positions and how few qualified candidates we have. Rebecca has several positive attributes that you can see them from her resume. She has a strong background in business administration, which includes finance, but more importantly, she has an extensive and very proven track record of success within our own district. A couple of highlights from her past successful endeavors in the district is thinking very abstract visionary kind of ideas like creating a human resource department in a three district, three district school system and actualizing our goals of having staff be able to, through technology, access all of their personnel records, creating a very systemic and consistent system of interviewing, implementing the fingerprinting process, bringing eye vision not only from the human resource module, which we had owned at the district for a couple of decades but never activated, organized all the training for that, organized all the training that took place and participated actively in bringing up the accounts receivable module for budget sets, so very much involved in the system and quite technologically savvy. The last two years, she has worked with me to develop three budgets. And that included having a very articulated process and clear process for identifying what is eighty-five percent of our budget, which is personnel, and then also working with us to develop not just the regional budget, which is complex, but also South Brocade, Mid-Brocade. She knows our system inside and out. We lose no momentum. She's very much involved in active dialogue about business practices with our finance department and works very closely with our three financial coordinators. Could we look and continue to search and find potentially an equal candidate perhaps, but none that would allow us to keep that forward momentum that we have going? Starting with someone who's unfamiliar with our district, first of all, is an unknown, been there. We also know that credentials on paper are not always what you get, been there. And we also know that it's important for the staff in the financial department to have some consistency, and Rebecca brings that. Any time lost is not time lost because we don't have a learning curve. What is blue mean? What is green mean? That was about a five-month process of learning what the colors are. So I think that what we may think we have a gap in in terms of any financial aspects of accounting can be learned, Becky's a quick learner, she's a doer, and her work effort is strong. The momentum loss is going to be far more significant than the gain realized in investing in what we already know to be a very dedicated staff. Greg Adams, you're inheriting this proposed recommendation, so can you turn it over to you?
I would concur. I think that obviously she's very intelligent. She has a strong background, not just working within our district, but other experiences outside of our district. And I think the intangibles that she brings, she has an outstanding attitude, she's a team player, she's a person of integrity and honesty. I think she's well-spoken and well-written. I think she has a great rapport with faculty and staff and the respect of faculty and staff. I think she'd be, I know she would do an outstanding job in this position and someone who I could trust to work hard and put the best interests of the districts first almost.
And one of the points that we haven't stressed is her communication skills are outstanding. And I can point specifically to very complex topics that she has synthesized and presented to staff in the form of PowerPoint presentations. She's very familiar with our staffs. She's frequent in all of our schools and actually has done employee presentations to all of our staff members in each of our ten schools. And at every, on every occasion, we have received positive emails from our staff saying, Becky did a great job on this presentation. So whatever it is and whatever training is necessary, she's done a stellar job in presenting Becky's topics to staff with great reviews. In terms of the financial piece, she has worked very closely, as I said, to prepare the budget but also to bring up our financial systems and also to work closely with our financial coordinators on a myriad of financial personnel issues and our accounting, billables and receivables. She is here, she's in a soundproof phone. We don't have one, but if we put her fire enough down the corridor, I think we're all set. And she is available to answer questions. So I would suggest before taking any formal vote, we invite her in and have a chance to ask her some questions, if that's the will of the committee. And I think her resume has gone around, now we're down nine, everyone should have one.
Christine, so just a small thing, the second letter of support from Nora, looks like it's missing the second page. Let me check. I'm not sure how critical that is, but...
She did not, I'm gonna put the go rate on record and say that she did not, in fact, she was very much not part of this process in terms of, you know, this is something she naturally derived, but was not part of this at all. And wasn't even aware she was invited, so it was all discussion. Until we got her in.
So folks okay with bringing Becky in?
Can I ask a question before you do?
Yep.
So the, I'd be interested, you and Nora, committee, did you talk to her about not being a traditional candidate with like direct, you know, normally I would think about somebody being in this position, having like coming from the finance, being Director of Finance somewhere else, like did you talk about the challenges?
She has been.
She actually has been. She's the Director of Human Resources Finance.
Yeah.
Town Treasurer.
The Town Treasurer in Barry. So she does have the finance, financial background. And so, you know, we, we talked about, she talked about, you know, why she wanted to transition over to the human resource area. And, you know, she just sees it as a challenge and something, you know, to move forward. And, you know, she was very impressive to me in articulating her reasons why she wanted to pursue this position. And I did actually kind of have the same thing when, you know, I could, you know, like, okay, that's all right, and I thought she didn't have any finance background either until I saw her resume and then...
Yeah, just she left the finance and now she's going back to it. That was kind of my question, like, why?
I think she kind of had a dual role and yet she had a human resource and finance responsibilities, so it wasn't really...
Yeah.
But even after those questions, we...
I think it's also important to know, one of the things that was really impressive and we did not treat her any differently in the process as we did anyone else, she was asked the same questions. Obviously, there's some variability because of the familiarity, but, you know, we asked the other finalist to talk to us about regional transportation, circuit break reimbursement and grants management. And that was not familiar to them. And Becky has been involved in all of those conversations in her work building those budgets. And that's an important piece for us to continue that momentum. We've done a lot of work around grants management and all of those pieces of what we do as a school department. And familiarity with the basic fundamental operations of a public school district is very different than someone else who might have a finance, you know, what we perceive to be a pure finance background in other types of business areas. In our business, we are eighty-five percent of our budget aligned to personnel. So the marriage of both very in-depth familiarity with human resources and how that budgeting works and how that hiring works and what it means to an operational budget is actually a plus. And we've spent a lot of time over the last several years making sure that that personnel piece was strong and very much tied to finance. Because if those numbers are wrong, those numbers represent the majority of our request to budget. So that marriage is essential. So having that in-depth knowledge is something that you'd hope to have from applicants because it's such a vital piece of what we do. So having that experience, I give, I commend her for wanting to along the way step out of what would be her comfort zone and maybe her understanding of human resources as she's done in her previous positions and branch out into other areas of business administration and finance. Being a town treasurer is very focused but also very fundamental to what we do because we work with the town treasurers so much. So understanding the warrant process, understanding what the town is expecting from us is very much a plus in our work and in finance as a, and business as a school district. And so all those, what seem to be very diverse and disconnected are very much the opposite.
So my, my large concern, which wasn't too fair, was I feel she's done such a good job in human resources and she's leaving large shoes to fill there. And it sort of, you know, never ends, right? I was pretty impressed. Will she conduct herself in the interview and answer the questions?
Yeah, so to follow up on that, that's what my question would be is because she is the human resource department, so...
Three.
There's three, okay. So what would the, if we do accept this, and what would the transition be when, because Jim's in an interim position, so when would this be effective and when would things like that happen?
So I can't think of a more ideal situation to have the physician who's transitioning into one be across the hall. You have no greater access to the person who knows the most information than to have them just a step away. So what we would do, this is a successful discussion tonight and the vote is to move Rebecca into this position, we would post immediately. For those of us who've been on search committees for some time, we were fortunate that we went out for one search for a human resource director, administrator, and there we found Rebecca. It tends to be more applicant-rich than the position that we're trying to fill at this point, so we would do that immediately. We are still two months left to the school year, even though everyone's feeling like, oh my gosh, we're all June thirtieth. So we do have, but we're there till June thirtieth. So we do have time for those transitions to occur, but again, she's across the lot when there are questions that come up. And she knows intimately the system and what she is expecting, we need to continue growth in that area. She's had that position. Jim has expressed to us that he, you know, he's working with us a couple days a week and we're, you know, we're also working collaboratively to continue the business operations. We are in really good shape right now. And my goal as superintendent, having worked in the finance area probably more than ever like the last couple of years, is to make sure that that transfers of budget as of June thirtieth is as close to being finalized in a given school year as possible. And he has, if the new superintendent makes the decision to do so, would make himself available to assist in any way. We've got some sizable projects that are potentially going to be funded in one or more districts and oversight of those projects, I have absolutely no doubt that Rebecca can handle that, she's very detailed, very detail-oriented and is aware of the conversations, just simply being part of Central Office right now. But additional support for Greg, who's new in the position, and Rebecca, who will be transitioning into the position, would be probably a recommendation in a direction that we would want.
The one thing I would add is, you know, I think obviously we need to think in terms of short-term, making sure the transitions are smooth, but I think when I think of, you know, the vision a year out or two years out, cross-training and having people who understand the different functions of the organization is a strength. And I see, you know, having someone in that business and finance, finance position who clearly understands the human side of the work that we do as a value add. And I think the more opportunities we can have, people understand the different functions of our organization and to be able to fill in when needed in those areas, only then strength to the work that we do.
Dan? So I think Rebecca would be an outstanding Director of Finance and Operations and I look forward to supporting her candidacy tonight, especially with the recommendations of our two, you know, leaders in the district. So before bringing her in, I just, more of a process question, do we, do we have directed questions for her? But I don't want that awkward moment of her coming in and we really don't have, but I don't have any. I don't, if other people do, absolutely, let's bring her in and ask them, but I just want, we're hoping to get a sense, so it's not awkward. We don't have questions, you know, predetermined, so do other people have questions?
I have one more question, I don't know if it's to the committee who already interviewed her or for her, is I noticed that she has her pending school business administration licensure and I just want to know the timing surrounding that, so I don't know if you could answer that, if that's something she would answer.
I guess we all asked Desi that. And it changes depending on the flow of licensure processing that they are doing. As superintendent, I can request an expedited review and that expedited review, particularly in this area of licensure, is something Desi takes seriously. So I would expect that, you know, all of her paperwork is in. So, you know, I don't want to say something that isn't necessarily going to come to fruition, but I would say two, few months max, depending on how backlog the Department of Education is. But again, usually when the superintendent's requested expedite, and in this particular area, where there are very few applicants who have the knowledge of a public school system in all of the areas we've already reviewed, and her credentials in terms of work experience, not just in this district, but also her educational experience, she has no gaps in what Desi's looking for in the process. The one great thing about, you know, the finance, business aspect of public education is their organization, Masbro and Mars, offer continuous workshops in this area, Becky would obviously be involved in that as well as some sort of, you know, prescribing during as well. So I, I have no doubt it will be approved when, I can't specifically date.
So I have one question for you, Lynn. You're in finance yourself, right? So obviously you approved her, I mean, can you talk about what you think of her finance background and how it's going to apply here?
Well, I sort of think, you know, I worked in healthcare, so I think, you know, what Senator Johnson said about knowing the decisions of the school, I always find that the finance people that I interact with in healthcare, the good ones, know about healthcare, like they don't just know about finance. And the ones who kind of are limited are the ones who just know about finance and just have a tunnel vision. Whereas the kind of life that she had, you know, eighty-five percent coming from, the budget coming from personnel, that, you know, that was a strength. And she deals with numbers all the time and she projects, you know, what's, what's the salary going to be? So she's projecting eighty-five percent of the budget, she's, you know, she's, and then, you know, you've got the benefits. And also I remember that, you know, some of the things about finance and a leadership position in finance is about compliance. And I, you know, that's becoming more and more important. And one of the things that I remember when Becky first came and she was pretty much, I just remember it was like, wow, she's been in jails.
Not personally.
And no educational background. So I, at first I remember thinking, okay, I guess Christine likes her, all right, I guess, you know, she knows human resources, because human resources is in jail, and you know, and so, you know, I was kind of, you know, wondering how it was going to work out. It worked out great. And I remember her coming, you know, with all these new things that we had to do to comply with the law that we weren't even doing. And we didn't know that we were, we had to do it. So it wasn't like, and she brought all these things to light. And that's one of the big things in finance area is compliance too, from the leadership part. So I felt uncomfortable in it and I know that she was from jail, so...
She'll go right home.
She proved me wrong that first time, so, you know...
I also want to point out something that when we talk about finance and operations, we tend to think about where's that accountancy background, right? But there are other people who have those specific roles and responsibility within the organization. So right now, as we've talked about before, we continue to use the services of a third-party sort of lens, Clifton, Haxman, and Allen, and we have for the last two years for numerous reasons. But that is the accountancy position that verifies all of the work that's processed through, and we also have that on the town side. So this is really an administrative, operational management type of position that is dealing, is multifaceted. It's not the accountant position because we have that. And we are on, and, you know, so we've worked on checks and balances over the last several years and Rebecca has been very much an integral part of those conversations, making sure that we are in compliance in a variety of areas, and there's been a lot of work done with that. And so I have great confidence in her knowing our work. And there will be no momentum lost, and that is my concern. There's nothing so disruptive to an organization than those starts, stops, and once you get the ball rolling and you're excited about, you see changes and you see improvements and you see better processes. To now have to stop and start all over again by explaining them and taking time to do that. And we've talked about, and we've talked with the chairs about the restructuring that we want to do within the organization. And I think once that is finalized, whether we need, without Greg coming in or a combination, we will have filled a lot of those other gaps that we had talked about, you know, who's overseeing the study services, what about transportation, I didn't even say that word, but transportation, and how are we going to be addressing those in a more comprehensive manner than we've ever done before? So we haven't picked, we haven't had those conversations yet, but I think that Rebecca, I don't think I know that Rebecca will be an integral part of that and able to work with those individuals. She has worked with the towns over health insurance, very much loved the conversations that we've had, and that's going to be a big issue going forward. So she's familiar with that as well.
Did you guys talk to her at all about, she lives in Barry, is that right? I mean, how far away is that? This finance director is, attends an awful lot of meetings at night and, you know, whatever it is that we're going to pay her, I mean, it's still, you know, is that going to become kind of a burden, you know? I think, I think no one really understands it until we put them through that gauntlet of meeting after meeting after meeting, night after night after night. I mean, does that come up in conversation at all?
There's, we are very transparent. She's observed it, she knows what she's getting into. She's in the office late, she's in the office early. She's already established a practice of getting it, in terms of getting what it means to be at Central Office. We've had those conversations. In fact, when she was hired several years ago, I think four years ago, we had that very conversation about what do you see your trajectory? And I had those concerns then, Barry's a hike, and in the winter it's a little brutal. But she's participated in a lot of the night meetings now, she knows what the schedule is, so there are no surprises. And quite frankly, that's been a problem. This, you can tell someone this is what is required, so they observe it and see it and have looked at it. You know, you can't check out at four o'clock and go home for dinner. And she's aware of that. But that's a great question, Paul, and it was, I think, very much weighing on her. So maybe she would have been interested in doing this before but wasn't ready, and this is a good time in her trajectory for her.
And I think we've observed her work at TEPCO for the past four years, to Christine's point. It's never once been something I've been talking about where commute has been an issue. And I understand there's another level of work and time committed to this position, but I have great confidence that that's not going to be an issue.
I do want to add something also. Rebecca is very capable of taking positive direction, direction that suggests that there might be other ways to look at the situation. And over the last four years, as you can imagine, when you have ebbs and flows and you're starting new programs, those kinds of conversations can become very challenging and difficult. And they have always turned out with positive outcomes and willingness to improve her practice. And I think that's a very positive attribute that she brings to the table. Because the work is not easy and the conversations are not always... Because the work is not easy and the conversations are not always sunshine and flowers.
Okay. So do we want her to come in? Do people have questions?
I think it doesn't hurt. I mean, but.
She's here.
She is.
I mean, at the very least, we could have her talk about why she wants the job.
I think that'd be a great idea.
Well, are we, are we voting after? Because then she would leave again, and then we would vote, is that right?
So we looked at the minutes from last year, just to make sure we're consistent with that practice. And I think there was the will of the committees at that time to make sure that there were no issues, that all the questions were asked, answered. The candidates stepped out, committees took their vote. And there was a strong sense that because it was favorable, that that was best done in front of the applicant as well, so they could feel that they are being supported by the committees, which is an incredibly important piece of the work. And so I would recommend that committees consider doing that as well. Because in this position, knowing that the school committees are behind the work that they do, which is challenging, is vital.
What if we gave her the option of being here or not? I mean, I don't know how she's going to feel about being here.
Well, if the committees, we chat on the way in if you want, because I think she would be fine with that. If that's what the committees, you know, if it's going to be a split vote, I think that's very difficult for an applicant to sit there, which is why I suggest maybe she come in to answer your questions, leave and then come back in, which is what we did last year.
Oh, it is? Oh, I thought you were talking about having her stay for the vote.
No.
Okay. All right, that's fine.
So she comes in, answers questions, is what we did last year. To the satisfaction of the committee, we ask her to step out, committee takes its vote, and we re-vote with her.
Oh, we go, which is, okay. Or we share the results of the vote.
Right.
Maybe I'll say we have to re-vote, but.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, as long as it's.
Yeah, okay.
Is there any indication, is there any indication at this point that there are naysayers in a vote? Just to take the temperature?
None here.
What if we change our minds?
I can't believe she said that.
We'll just, we'll, we'll all do like this thing, you know, we'll change our minds.
Can you know Karen?
I do, I do still.
I was with you.
I just think it's important to have pointed questions for her, so it's not awkward. If there are any.
I think she can take it.
All right, but you, you go ahead. We'll bring her in, and she can sit there and no one says anything.
Questions for her, you know, when we, you know, went through that process.
I think they're saying, I think they're saying we didn't have any questions. Exactly.
If you have one, find out how you feel. She can handle one question, please.
Paul, you said you have a question, right?
I do.
So you could just go talk about herself.
I got two.
And I think even though we talked together, it would be great to hear it from her as well.
That's right.
Yeah.
I think she'd probably feel better.
All right, well, let's hear it.
I have no idea. I think she went that way.
Where's Becky?
I walked in with her. I didn't know she was our candidate tonight.
I know. You're like, she's, she's probably sitting.
I was like, can you show me where the meeting is?
I know, I'm like. That Roger, you kiss out a secret. Ah, good.
I've been wondering if we really need finance director at all these meetings.
I'm not sure.
Sometimes you do.
You didn't know it was down to the.
I knew that I.
You interviewed with the thing, but you didn't know how. Oh, you suspect.
But no, I didn't know actually.
We spent some of our time together, and I think it's only fitting.
Hi, Becky. Thank you for being here.
Nice to see you after all this time.
I know.
It's been a couple of weeks.
I guess some of us at least have some questions, but I don't know if there's anything you wanted to say first, just about.
First of all, I just wanted to thank everyone for this, for the opportunity. I was excited to join the district for school years ago now. And it's been a great opportunity for me to be able to build the Human Resources Department from what consisted of, you know, multiple processes in different departments into one cohesive department, where employees now know who to go to when they have a question. And so I'm, I'm excited about this prospect. I've had a great opportunity to work with Superintendent Johnson over the past two budget cycles in terms of preparing the budgets for the three districts. Now, as you know, the personnel costs are about two-thirds of each of the budgets. So it does represent the largest piece. So we've had great fun in preparing that. And, you know, my background is varied. I did start as a town treasurer. Actually, I didn't start, but I guess my most recent experience was as an elected town treasurer in the town of Barry, where I live. And as part of that, I was responsible for reconciling the accounts there. I worked with the town accountant to do that. I also processed it, processed the payroll and the expense warrants and was responsible for receiving all the funds that the town received. After that, I was tapped by Sheriff Evangelitis, and I served in three different capacities for him. The first was in his civil process unit, which I served in four months, four short months, in which time I discovered that the, that division did not have a corporate structure. I couldn't even open a bank account because it was not a state agency. It was off by itself and was operating how I don't know. But worked with our attorneys and also our accountant to come up with a number of different proposals that he would review and then ultimately made the decision on. After four months there, he decided to bring me up to the jail and House of Corrections, where I was the, the Director of Administration and Finance, which was essentially the Human Resource Director and the CFO for the facility. So we had about 1,200 inmates on any given day and 550 employees that were spread out over four different locations. So it was an interesting setting. And some of the stories that I would, you know, share with people, they just could not believe what was encountered on a day-to-day basis. But moving into this role is a little bit nicer, it's friendlier, and the people here are great. So I'm very excited about this prospect.
Any questions? I have, go ahead.
So from looking at your resume and your cover letter, it seems like you have many skills, sort of like spokes on a wheel. However, one of your skills is the finance piece. It seems like your trajectory for it isn't necessarily traditional. And I was just wondering how you feel about that. Is there any apprehension? What are you feeling, moving from HR to a finance position?
Well, as I said, I did work as the CFO at the jail. We had a $40.5 million budget when I first started. When I left in August of 2015, it had increased to $45.9 million. And that was just the operating budget. That did not include, we had additional funds for our community service programs. We had federal and state grants for our education and our substance abuse. So I was overseeing all of that. When I left, I, human resources was something I like, I enjoy helping people. And so that's why I went in the Human Resource group. But I've really seen that I've kind of been drawn back into the finance role in working with Christine on the budgeting process. And I do also see the interrelationship between human resources and finance. I think because it is such a large piece of what is done financially, it's important that human resources provide finance with the essential tools, with the information, so that things can be processed appropriately and employees are happy.
I have, I have one other question. You were around here a few years ago when we had the embezzlement issue. What would you say you've learned from that that you could apply as the finance director?
I've actually had the unlucky, you know, proposition of being in two places where there was an embezzlement. When I was with the town of Barry, our town collector also had embezzled money at the time. And I've learned from both of those positions, actually. When I was with the town of Barry, we, I felt it was a lack of ability to do the job. And we had brought the issue forward to the board of selection and also to the town council at the time. And once I left, it was discovered that the embezzlement had been happening. I think it's important to trust your gut. I think it's important, if, you know, with money, to make sure that internal controls are in place. And that is one thing that I had done at the jail and House of Corrections, to make sure that there are tight internal controls. And I know that the Masbo report also had recommendations for that, that we have implemented. But I think that it's, it's very important to, if there's any inkling to, to really make sure that, you know, you're getting in there and you're checking things out.
I've already heard your answer, but I think maybe in the previous interview process I participated in, but, you know, the distance, geographical distance is always something that comes up, you know, in these kinds of positions. And I know you've been living it, and I heard, you know, your view on it. But maybe if you'd share with, you know, the committees here, how you, how you handle it and how you feel about it going forward.
So my commute is an hour each way. And what I do is I take that time to actually improve, a lot of self-improvement, a lot of podcasts. My kids hate getting in the car with me because it's so confusing. So I do take that time. I'm actually, my, my husband and I are at a point in our lives where our youngest is going to be graduating from high school next year. And we have actually thought about relocating to a central location between his employment and my employment to make that commute a little shorter. But I've actually, you know, I've come to, I guess, become accustomed to the commute. And it's not something that, you know, bothers me any longer. So like I said, it's my self-improvement time. It's my time to, you know, disengage before I, I get home.
Joe?
Becky, thank you for being here tonight and answering our questions and giving us background into your experience. I was impressed to see the work that you've done already, that we all know that you've done, but especially in helping Amory, who was one of your recommendations. And also you talked about in your experience on your resume about student support services and analyzing this staff structure, which is really important. Because you're talking about the personnel being a big component, but it also is the special ed budget is, goes hand in hand. I don't want to put you on the spot, but, you know, when we usually have a candidate who is out of the district, we always know what the big challenge is going to be, is getting to know everybody, getting to town managers, knowing the structure, you know, how the whole organization begins. With you, you're going to be able to go in and just move desk and you'll be, and you're going to start. But what do you see to be a challenge that maybe you can put it into our mind as we could prepare for the next budget season coming up for next year? Do you see any challenges? And if not, that's okay too.
I think we're always competing with, for resources each year. And I do think that the special education budget is one that really needs to be reviewed very closely. I worked, Marie and I, Deb and Erica, worked very closely. In fact, yesterday and this afternoon, we've been working with principals on their staffing levels for next year and making sure that whichever students require services, that those services are being fulfilled, either with, you know, one-on-one aides or any sort of ancillary services that need to be provided. We have seen, and we've heard this from the principals, an increase in special cases coming into the district, you know, is early in the preschool and moving up through the ranks, needing assistance, needing that one-on-one assistance. So I do see that. And I also think that our English language population, I mean, what was it, Rhoda said last week, 20, you know, different languages that are spoken just at the preschool. You know, we're, we're seeing that. So we're, I've been working very closely with Rhoda in terms of trying to bring in new staff, whether it be, you know, a tutor, a teacher for, for next year to provide those services. So I think those really are the two areas that we always need to be aware of because they always seem to be those budget drivers.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Kathleen?
So I don't think you're too on the spot, but I am about to. But you're Human Resources, so I know you can handle it. So you've been in the position of being here four years and being able to observe three different directors of finance and operations. So what have you learned from those three different people that you think you're going to bring to this job, that you think you've observed from them that this is what it's going to take to be successful in this job?
I think the most important thing is communication. I think when there's a lack of communication, it builds an... I don't want to say an atmosphere of distrust, but there, there, there's just not work going on between the two, you know? So there really needs to be ongoing and active communication between the superintendent and the business manager. And also the, the directors as well, like they need to know what's, what's happening. If, you know, if there is a need for a new, you know, English language teacher or tutor, how can we work together in order to come up with a creative way to find money in the budget to support that? I think it's being accessible. And I've been able to build the relationships within the district. And I try to get out to the schools as much as I possibly can, pick up the phone and call people versus sending an email, because I think that personal touch really makes a difference. People want to feel supported. And so I, I really think that communication all around is the most important thing.
Anyone else? All right. Well, thanks for being here, Becky.
Thank you.
At this point, we're going to take a vote, so if you want to step out just a minute. Would anybody like to make a motion? Dan? Well, I would move that we vote to approve Rebecca Pellegrino as Director of Finance and Operations. Seconded by Paul Bogta.
Do we need a motion from every?
Yeah, from all four, I think, right?
So why don't we, don't move for Southmore?
Just. I'm going to go, Joan.
I'd like to make the same motion to accept Becky Pellegrino for the Director of Finance and Operations for the Union and for Northborough.
Thank you.
I'll second for the Union and Northborough.
Susan seconding for both.
I'll second for Southmore.
Paul, just a process question. Does every, all committees vote for this particular role? Is that what I'm understanding or not?
It's region and Union, but our practice in the district is to have a vote from each of us.
Which is good. I just want to make sure that we're not breaking something. So the, okay. The practice is different than what?
It's required that region and the Union vote.
That's right.
For solidarity, we always have the committees offer, which is our practice.
Right, okay. So we've got quorum for both. We'll see how it goes if we have to parse things. Any discussion? I guess we've discussed enough. All right. All in favor? That is unanimous.
That would be very awkward if she was here.
This is what you do when there's one in and out and swap off.
Really disappointed she didn't speak about me at all.
It was. No holes. Yeah. Yeah.
To, to.
They're starting over.
Before dinner.
That's right. Yeah, well, well.
This is just on a Monday night until Tuesday morning.
So they're going out again.
We thought she was nervous. The principals are sharing riddles with you.
Well, after, you can see, was extensive discussion. All three committees or four committees voted unanimously to appoint you to the position of Finance Director, so congratulations.
Now get to work.
Going to go get a kid off to Hawaii.
Really?
Yeah, not me.
All right, well, thanks again for being here, congratulations. Congratulations. Christine, did you have something else you wanted to add?
We established the school calendar, and we included in that calendar an identification of the professional development days. Since we approved the calendar, where is it, Super Tuesday, we had a professional development day scheduled for March 20th. We'd like to, I'd like to recommend that we move that professional development day from March 20th to March 3rd, that's Super Tuesday. And for the first time, our voting in Northborough, much like it is in Southborough, will center around middle schools, so we're very excited about that in Northborough, we've talked about it a few years. And previously, we voted in our K-5 elementary schools, and so now it just lets Southborough voting in Trotter, we'll be voting at Malacca. It will ease the burden, and that is a very busy day for elections, and so that certainly will help with voting processes at both of our elementary schools. So my recommendation is that we revise this to move the 20th of March to March 3rd. And if that is approved, we will get out very quickly a revised calendar. Obviously, our parents need to know sooner than later, as much as we can, to give them advance notice to prepare for childcare and so forth, so that would be my request this evening.
So moved. Dan?
Well, I'd just like to move it for discussion.
Sorry. Please.
This is the same calendar that's already published, you're welcome to...
Oh, God, I thought you had the new ones.
And move the block from the 20th to the 3rd, if that's what the calendar looks like. There would just be that slight revision.
Do we have a motion from the other committees?
Motion from Northborough?
Second.
Was that Kelly, second?
I said second, if you need a second, I can second.
Okay.
We don't need a Union, do we?
So it's a Monday, the second, or the Tuesday, the third?
It's Tuesday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Roger, did I hear you move for Southborough?
Sure, I'm moving for Southborough.
Thank you. So any discussion?
I just had a question for clarification. So Christine, November 5th is the first time that we're trying the voting at the middle school, right?
Actually, no, May 14th, we're doing a local election in Northborough, and then Tuesday is the national election.
I see.
So this is for next year.
Okay, perfect. Excellent.
Busy, busy election year next year.
Anything else? All in favor? That is unanimous. One other thing.
One more.
Okay.
Just an update on the assistant superintendent search. We are, we had a phenomenal amount of applicants in the first search. I thank school committee members for serving on the committee, Kelly, Roger, and Kathleen, thank you, for serving on that search committee. We have asked the same members of that committee if they would be interested in serving on a second search. We are not discouraged by that at all, because oftentimes we find that just a different time of year, a different time in people's processing about whether they're looking for another position or not, changes drastically within a month or two, and oftentimes are not successfully appointed on the second search rather than the first. So we have sent out information, we reposted the position. We did have two candidates that Greg and I both interviewed that were moved forward from the search committee, which did an amazing job processing through a number of applications, but felt that we have not yet found that next great assistant superintendent, and we'll be, I think, interviewing right after EVO vacation. But we will keep you posted, long posted, in the process. And I do want to say thank you to all of the committee members on behalf of our current and future superintendents. I think we found an excellent candidate to work this district for in the area of finance and operations, so thank you very much for accepting the right decision. We will send something out to the greater district tomorrow.
Okay, great. I believe that's it, we'll entertain motions to adjourn from everyone but Southborough. Paul for the region.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. Ms. Kelly for Northborough.
Second for Northborough.
Seconded by Joan?
Lauren.
Oh, sorry.
I'll move for the Union.
I'll second for the Union.
Was that Joan, for Union? All in favor? You are adjourned.